I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice Trump. Justice Trump. Justice Trump. Justice Trump. Justice Garrett. Mayor Moore. Mayor Barton. Oh, that's a long time.
Wow.
I know, I knew that was gonna happen.
Here.
Hey Josh.
Yes, India.
Thinking of you.
Uh, the motion approved minutes June 8th, 2015 board meeting. Got the second?
Second.
Discussion additions or deletions?
There was no report from me in there at all. I was in attendance. I swear I was.
Any particular that?
I didn't get that.
I don't catch it either, I'm sorry.
Don't be. It would've been really embarrassing if I didn't catch it. Yeah, so you talked about the library. Yep, my comp and...
Can we approve? Is it approved these, the medical papers are done? Any user part to be added in the final draft? Is it added discussion?
As long as you catch verbatim my profound...
Well, we'll get the date.
Yes.
We'll get the date.
Let's turn your votes over.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries with the additions to be put in there. The motion will approve the special board meeting June 19th, 2015. Got the second?
Second.
Any discussion on these minutes? On this, I have not heard. I have not heard from Mr. Patterson. They have not heard from Mr. Patterson about what he's spursing up means...
The per se sign on the side of the building. Holding it together.
Yep. The next step is concentration. Did you have a chance back to Mr.?
He was still on vacation as of today, he's gonna be back tomorrow.
So I'll try him tomorrow. We'll see where it takes us. The next step, this is for the court.
Well, we have to go through the motions and he has his opportunity to respond if he chooses to.
Okay. The clock's ticking on this thing.
But right now, he's just beating around the bush basically. He doesn't wanna talk about it really.
I'll send an email tomorrow. Testing the waters, man. Okay, there's no further discussion?
Yeah. Does it say there's no further discussion?
I got first and the second. First and the second. Alright, no further discussion, all those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any more extension? The motion approved the minutes June...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
So long.
I got two minutes. Okay, first and the second. Any discussion on these minutes?
Three seconds.
All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any extension? Any opposed? Motion carries. This page, you're on.
Thank you. Yeah, um, well as you all know, we're in the process of trying to get Mr. Patterson to either fix or demolish his building. I sent him notice of violations to that effect. Met with him one day out there in the sidewalk, but that didn't prove to be very fruitful. He believes the building's been like that for a hundred years and why change it now, so... So we're trying to contact our village attorney, but he was on vacation last week and today. So I'll keep trying that route, just make sure that we don't miss a step here going forward because it is a very defined pro- uh, progress or however you wanna word it. Yeah, that we have to follow to do this. Um, we had our engineer look at it, he gave us his report, I'm sure you all got copies of that and pictures. I have pictures and they're all in there. So it's, it costs a little bit of money at the end of the day, but that building is not safe the way it is. I mean, given what happened with the old meat locker when that finally fell, this one here, I don't believe it's that far away from that. And I don't think the front of that building where the bricks are all cracked and falling out, it's not safe.
Like your Morris, same thing, it came down very fast.
I wouldn't want anybody walking in front of that and get the windstorm like this go by, you know, what's gonna happen? So, other than that, I've been dealing with the guy across the road with the grass, he has an attorney. But the attorney made different claims that I responded to. I mean, he gotta prove to me he doesn't own it, right now, it's the only information I have, he still owns it. So, I sent it back to the attorney, I haven't heard anything back yet on that. There's a couple other ones in the village. Oh, the one on Church Street, I see they made an attempt to cut the grass. That's owned by Wells Fargo.
Could be a seller for the lot with the auction.
I don't know. I had some email, I talked to somebody, sent them a notice of violation and I see they sorta cut it there.
Sure.
Yeah. But other than that, I got another one on National Drive I found today. Um, about it, I guess.
Any questions for Mike?
What's going on with the property up on Oak Street? You see he's moved the back hall a couple different places, but nothing's really happening.
He's supposedly working there on weekends on Saturday, digging and mov- I mean, last time I was up there, stuff was done. I haven't been, I haven't checked it in a couple weeks.
Well, it doesn't look like anything's happened with the rest of the building that's still there. I see the back hall gets moved, but I don't see anything changing with the building that's still left there.
He's supposed to be tearing it all down, taking the stone out and filling the hole in. I'll check on it this week.
Okay.
Anything else for Mike?
If not, I'll have another board meeting.
Alright, now we'll have the discip- thing here, just like you go. Presentation of additions, communications, notices, general question period from residents in the community.
That's you.
Oh.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, that works.
Wasn't paying attention, sorry.
Greetings. Summer has arrived with the extra warm weather. Of course, you all remember the cold, the winter just passed and these days are a welcome experience.
To sit there soaking wet.
Yeah, perspiring dreadly. Plans for Village Fest on August 15th are moving forward and we hope that event enjoyed by all who attended. Remember, August 15th will also be a very special day in the village as we will dedicate and rename the River Street Park to monitor a well-regarded village resident, William Bell Earl, who is remembered fondly by all. Everyone is invited to attend the dedication ceremony down by the river at 1:00 PM on August 15th. Also, join us for the good times, good entertainment, and of course, the ice cream social from noon to four at the newly dedicated William Bell Earl Park. The water project continues to move forward. The award of bids to construct the new water towers, one on Prospect, one on the West Service Road, has been awarded. I anticipate that work will start there within the next five or six weeks. The base must be put in first for the water towers and that, uh, that will be put in so that the real construction will begin in the spring. The remaining parts of the project shall go out to bid around September, October, with construction going full steam ahead beginning in the spring of 2016. This is a long-awaited project, uh, your patience is greatly appreciated and it will, it's going to be rather, uh, it's gonna be rather difficult here with the construction vehicles and everything else moving around the village. But within a year or so, we'll have a much better water supply, the pressures will be better, the water software will be in, and I think that's something that will be enjoyed greatly by all. The new boat program has proven to be quite successful with the numbers of participants growing over the past couple weeks. More rowers are always welcome on our Friday night excursions at 6:00 PM. Please come down, enjoy the river and the fun of sharing an experience that I think all will enjoy. We encourage groups, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, other groups here in the community, to, uh, come down and enjoy the water, enjoy the river, it's a beautiful thing. Come down and have a good time. But that's all I have. Justice Garrett.
I have nothing to drink for tonight.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Justice Drumblee.
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, say that it'll be allowing campfires for two more periods, trial period. I hope everybody that is partaking and that is enjoying it, but please remember your neighbors, um, just remind them if there's an issue, try to get along, try to work it out, um, and burn dry wood. I think you won't have any issues if you burn clean and dry wood and I hope it goes well. So far, we've had the wishes, so, um, we would make this more permanent thing, things go the way we intend them to. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone that went to the blood drive, uh, we've been doing really well. We have one every eight weeks, you probably seen my banner, the Blood, but Price Shopper, New Infances. Uh, we need more new donors, we have gotten a few based on those signs, people have actually walked in, pretty solid sign. Uh, the next one is September 14th and, you know, come down and donate, we need more donors. It's been a very important thing, it's a very heartfelt thing to do, we have to help others, so come on down. That's all I have.
It's okay, the position that Ross is finding, are you thinking?
Yes, yes, they have, they have called me.
That's good, thank you. Justice Higginson.
Few events and announcements, the Amazing Champagne Challenge Kids Fund donations have been very successful. We've had three out of six, maybe one last night when we had about 20 kids participate. Very, very popular. And we had 10 in the, uh, four to six-year-old group. See, all those little kids were all, it's really fun.
Elbows are just a fly.
Really, really a lot of fun. Um, we're looking at, um, August 2nd as our local talent concert. We're here, Kathy focuses on that, it looks like that's a good date for her and the performers, but I will share that for sure later. I think that's better. We do need a trailer or a stage. So I know one time we used the one of...
You have W?
We have W.
Like, like that?
Because the one we used before is not there. Well, it's not. They're out now. And probably on the second. Um, as the mayor mentioned, the Village Fest is August 15th, so we'll start it off as we have in the past years with the, um, bike race starting at 8:00 AM. We'll get that application on the way soon. Um, and the champagne, we'll call it, is a lot of fun. It's, uh, I'd recommend everyone to come try it. It's really fun to get on the river. The row would better though. Um, the farmer's market begins this Saturday, July 18th, at 9:00 or 2:00 AM. Right? Am I right? Okay. Um, and I think we've got five or six members right now. Um, and the only other thing is that the, uh, the Village of Champagne History Series will be continuing in the fall and October 8th, Helen Nurseka, who is with the, um, County Historical Society, will be talking about the Hui Ashi. And I've got a couple of, uh, ones that works. Yes.
In the rowing, what day is that?
Fridays at 6:00 PM.
Fridays at 6:00?
Yeah, it's really fun. We've had a great turnout, I'd say 10, 15 people on just every time.
Nice stuff, last Friday night, did a few shifts. Kids went out first. It was fun to watch it because the doors would bring the tray first and then get some of that.
It takes a little while, yeah, to get the hang of it.
And then the second shift was, uh, was...
Yeah, I guess we can discuss this as a board or... They offered us another vote, a four-person rowboat, rowing boat, which we thought might be good for the kids because we really are committed to developing a teenage youth team. And it's kind of hard to come up with a six all the time, but I think four would be more likely. So I have not said yes because actually I did not talk to you about the darks.
But they made it through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see. I would have to, if they're not, I would have to.
Should I email the manager, say yes or...
I think it's a good venture to start late or something.
Okay.
I'm sure we can email him.
Alright.
Maybe you can put the boat. Try one, you put the dock and then the second one to the boat.
Oh.
Okay. Maybe it doesn't work.
You could, you could do that.
It'd be better.
Yeah.
Two more sections of dock, you can put what you have.
I'll see this week what it's like.
You could call Nick Hatch over there again to ask him the question. Or even ask him the question, yeah, ask him the question you need. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we need for...
So how long does the rowing go till?
It's going to go into the fall.
Oh, so maybe, yeah, maybe not long enough. If you have enough interest.
We really are supposed to have one youth group go over and compete and I think we went to one time, we were in December, early fall. So hopefully we'll be ready for that.
So the kids that you have coming down, have you asked them to maybe like do something on their Facebook page or try and connect with other kids?
Yeah, it's not that there's not interest, they are so busy.
Right.
That's the problem. Yeah, I wanna come, but that night we went on a row, or you know, I had them, I came to take care of this. That's what has been part of it. Maybe Friday nights aren't bad.
If you have an interest, maybe you could go to the ends of it. You know, something.
Yeah, because too, with the teenagers that are working, you know, your weekends are your busiest time and they're working. So maybe a weeknight might be better.
Yeah.
For the kid part anyway, the teenage team. I know.
The Boy Scouts are involved in it. Last you heard, the Boy Scouts are involved in the holy thing. Give them that, the Boy Scouts, I can see it, it would be something where...
I think it would be a badge thing there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is badge of both of them.
Party. They'll pick me down and, uh, down to pick me down.
Well, let me, yeah, let me touch base with those, those volunteers again and, uh, of course, the other thing is we have two coaches trained right now and so I've been working around their schedules and that I also have to bring in.
Guys, are you training others? Can you come up here and train?
He's going to try to come on Friday.
If he has something super, you know, so.
I know, so, you know, water with, and...
Okay, thank you. Justice Drumblee.
Uh, the only thing that I have, uh, from our last meeting was we talked about, um, possibly getting a portable PA system and a podium. They did reach out to Pfizer, um, they are not looking to have another auction until probably this fall. I have the email address that, um, we, I'll, I'll give it to Bonita and Mary and what happens is they send in the name and the email address of the people that the village wants added to the mailing list, the emailing list. And when they're ready to have another auction, they'll send out the email and with all the items that are listed. But right now, they're not looking until, until fall, so. But she wasn't sure what they had for portable systems, but yes, definitely they had, uh, podiums, so.
Okay.
Right?
I guess we can get by, go over and run from it in the next session.
We want for the function question. So you want to have this something on the screen?
Yeah. Or you have, or you have speaking, issue, period of fiction.
We have some members and stuff that you find that you can really use in your shop.
Yeah, are we doing the concerts in the park this summer?
Over one concert, the August 2nd concert will be...
Little talent.
I call it Little Talent.
Okay. Oh, I see. I thought it was a town. And, and, yeah, we had talked about him, like, maybe ready some tiny stalls if they like to come to the park.
Yeah, I've been in touch with Mary McCaffrey.
But it was more than that?
Yeah. Yes, and said yes, I would like to have one of them, but right now I don't have it.
So Larry Bear was interested as well, but...
Does he have a, uh, a local, uh, service site?
So, the Boy Scouts are questions in the board.
What do you decide we'll make?
That's what this company up there. We can get entertainment, something that'll bring the people and keep them down at the village, down at the village fest. We're gonna get the ten, we'll do the dedication and the ten. But we need to, I think it's appropriate for us to get some, get people, somebody to come in and play and sing and, you know, we've had a period of the person, God bless him. We had some last, last year, didn't hold the crowd, didn't bring it, didn't have no set. Janet came up with, I think, a good idea of inviting, uh, someone of well-known, uh, recognition here in the North Country, inviting this person. She was emailed in from, uh, Florida.
So, um, I said, I heard, uh, and you know, this morning, some of you might remember him as a pretty much, uh, there's news as well. Um, he is free on 15th, um, he's available on 15th. Um, he would love to come, um, his, uh, his cost is $500 for two 45-minute sets. Um, he does have someone that he's, can bring with him, a fiddler, but that adds an admission of three, so it would be eight hundred for two of them, but he's quite happy to bring just himself. Um, I told him it would be late afternoon and I figured, um, something like four or six. Um, so it's not actually part of the ice cream park, but we bring in people here at the end of the day, which is, which is...
I think we're gonna lose people by then because they're gonna be going all day long and if it's a hot sunny day...
People will come just for him, that will be...
If any recognition, I think we'll keep them, we'll draw them in.
Yeah, the next day he's at the Redwood picnic, um, he's down at Saratoga, like, that weekend, he's so long, uh...
And if we ever does it, I think people not just from the local community, but from, uh, like, Jersey, New Orleans.
I'm afraid they put it in the middle of the afternoon, that it might be, well, I, I'm busy during the day, but, so I'm not gonna come.
Well, you're not gonna, you're not gonna always be able to get everybody, I mean, you know, it's, it's hard, it's summertime.
Ice cream is originally, so that will be, that will be an added, added problem for us. But if you don't, you don't, I don't know, if you want to do it, one of the fortifies, I think, probably, probably some of them. I think it'd be worth it, you know, to get somebody, some name, some name value, you know, this is our opportunity, this is our, before we looked at this, Village Fest in the past, but it's our way to get back to, uh, our way to bring the community together for the, um, for the, for the, you know, uh, school base. We have other opportunities for the kids, the, 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 jumping gym, where they're model players, and, uh, you know, I think it's something for the adults, a little bit more to drive them.
So for those rest of the questions, something.
What do you decide we'll make them?
That's what it's, it's coming up. I don't agree. We can get entertainment, something that, that will bring the people and keep them out of the village, out of the village first. We're going to get the hand, obviously, we'll do the dedication and the, but we need to, if it's appropriate for us to get some, get people, somebody to come in and play and sing. We've had, here you have the person, God bless him. We had some last, last year, didn't hold the crowd, didn't bring it, didn't have any set. Janet came up with, I think, a good idea of inviting, someone of, of well-known recognition here in the North Country, inviting this person. She was emailed in from, from.
So I sent Lloyd Hurd, and you know, this morning, some of you might remember him as a pretty much a, there's news as well. He is free on the 15th, he's available on the 15th. Would love to come. His, his cost is $500 for two 45 minutes sets. He does have someone that he's, can bring with him, a fiddler, but that adds an admission of three, so it would be eight hundred for two of them, but he's quite happy to bring just himself. I told him it would be late afternoon, and I figured something like four or six. So it's not actually part of the ice cream part, but we bring in people at the end of the day, which is, which is.
I think we're going to lose people by then because they're going to be going all day long, and if it's a hot sunny day.
People will come just for him that won't.
If any recognition, I think we'll keep them, we'll draw them in.
The next day, he's at the Redwood picnic. He's down at Saratoga later that week, and he's so long.
And if we ever does it, I think we'll, people not just from the local community, but from, out like Jersey, or dinner.
I'm afraid to put it in the middle of the afternoon, that it might be, well, I'm busy during the day, but so I'm not going to come.
Well, you're not going to, you're not going to always be able to get everybody. I mean, you know, it's, it's hard, it's summertime.
Ice cream is the original, we got that in, so that won't be, that will be an added problem, because if we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't provide, I think, probably, probably something. I think it'd be worth it, you know, to get somebody, some name, some name value, if this is our opportunity, this is our, before we look at this, those tests in the past, what's our way to get back to, our way to bring the community together for the, 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 for the opportunities for the kids, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the , you know, I think it's something for the adults, a little bit more to, to drive in. We've always had most of the spices, you know, for everything we do, that's very first, I think it's important to, 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 this is for that.
Will it be down in that park or with the pavilion?
Down at the park, maybe.
Oh, okay. I like the idea of having, I know it's an extra expense, but.
I'm sure, I'm sure, actually, I don't know what it is, but I'm sure that.
I was just, I was going to add, I think, there's most of those, other than, actually, it's really, it's really, it's just, just.
I, I think it's worth the extra money. It's entertainment in itself, watching itself play out.
Boy, I enjoy it.
So.
Do we need a state fund to go on?
It might help to have something.
We need something, we need to develop something that.
He doesn't, he doesn't come with something?
As we all look over at Mike.
Well, I don't think so, in most places, they have something.
I'm sure they have their own services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would.
Because more of the things, when we email, we'll email, we'll find out what we need to say.
We'll talk to a lot.
I can use some, too, I can.
When we decide, if this is what the group, if we want to take, we'll email him and find out what he needs, set his appropriate. We apply the way that we need it something, note something temporary.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Temporary or temporary something.
You said for the state, so, who's, who's.
They sell them all off.
Maybe he has them built?
So we have some, we have. Covered to, like.
Plus, within the diaphragm.
Random order, actually.
Let's see what this guy will break. If the, what is recorded, sorry. My camera isn't wanting to be up on the trailer. I think he's wanting to be down on the floor, ground, ground level. Yeah. Especially on the day right there. He's not going to get any shit either on the trailer. So where are you at, folks? What would you like to do?
I'd like to be, my, 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 just happen to, for the state, to check the, to, to listen, that's the one I think.
It doesn't work. We'll be a family, people got this promotion, so we can expand the class.
I'm in promotion, hire Lloyd Hurd for $500 and spend the additional $300 on the playground for our village fest.
On second, Bill?
On second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Where would that come out of?
Uh, of the, of the, our village festival.
What's the number on that? What else do we expend for that? I mean, there's just a lot of money for an hour and a half. An hour and a half.
We can spend less.
Eight seventy-nine, eight nine point four.
There's probably, it's coming.
Well, I have to agree with the fact of, of. It is giving the actual community that, and twenty.
That, that is, that's the playground, the playground that's so private, and the culture series for Dan and.
Where we pull them to the pavilion?
We'll just, we'll have to transfer ten thousand dollars to the park.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, is there anything further?
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Fisher.
Aye.
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Anything else before we move on to finances?
Um, everyone has their report for June. We assess the revenue reports, I think we just started. We haven't told us yet. Um, we did water in Sura building. The water was fifty-three thousand, seven fifty-three, thirty-eight. And Sura was seventy-six thousand, four twenty-nine, oh, three.
It's above average.
Yeah, our, our Sura went down, we're dead, that's why I feel like.
Well, well.
We lose the rate, so that's.
Well, we're also a little bit lower, too, because of the loss of Shazie that we lost a year ago, but we're running around eighty-nine thousand for Sura.
Outside Hollis.
Outside Hollis has nothing to do with our water.
Oh, that's true. Never mind.
You did the income.
Yes. You're right.
We also, um, got a, a whole lot of my health insurance, to stay with my, the same health insurance that I have now, um, it's going from five hundred ninety to nineteen to six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents to twenty percent, eleven point six percent. From five ninety to the what?
Sixty.
That's just a simple combination. It's still comparable to what we pay for the.
Okay, any questions for one of you?
Yeah, um, under the, the parks and bolt launch, I know we're paying our temporary person out of that, right? So you had on the, the general fund, you had an expense fourteen eighty-five, eighty-three for the end of June, and then you have it on the, um, abstract, again, in a different amount, though, for West Step of fifteen twenty-four, forty-three.
Because we pay, they, we give an invoice weekly on that.
Right.
So it's five hundred and somewhat dollars. So this is what we paid last month, and this is for going forward. Each month, we have a.
So this, this is.
It's never the same.
No, I understand that, but, well, I was just trying to understand, so you have this ended six thirty, and then on the abstract, you have it for six twenty-one, six twenty-eight, and seventy-five.
Because we get, because it's, it's a couple weeks before we get the actual bill.
We won't build them self.
Okay.
Now we're getting them by email.
Okay, so then, for the six thirty is going to be the first two and a half, three weeks.
Started in May, started in May.
Right, but it wouldn't have been billed on this.
So this is about five hundred and sixty dollars.
Ended on the thirty-first, that's what I'm thinking, the end of the year.
So that would be three weeks, three weeks in June. But it's always runs behind a week or two before we get, actually get the bill for.
But, but none of this should be expended just past the first of June?
If we didn't get. For the May till. It depends on when we get the bill.
Okay, well, that was just my question on that, just to clarify in my head, because I thought, you know, we had to have everything in, uh, for that period. Okay, um, I have one other question on, this is probably.
Have we all paid out at the end of June? Did we have a meeting at the end of June, and all paid out?
To pay him, yes.
Two weeks, yeah, that was two weeks, yeah.
Right. No, but I was just, you know what I'm saying, in, in clarifying that, just wrapping my hat around it.
They were sending, they were sending emails to, 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 West Step was not getting the emails, so we didn't get them, so we could get the, 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 pay it once a month, we needed it on the warrant.
Right.
So we've got to get the bills into her, same time to make the warrant. They've been better, right?
And the May starter?
Yeah, the first station, I mean, the starter, the first station that starts the pumps, first station. Yeah, Old Street, whatever, five hundred. It was like four oh one, and.
Right.
Yeah, like that starter for the pumps, after the, after the station.
And one last one, just out of ignorance, Juanita, what does NYSSMFO membership stand for?
Oh, that's the New York State Government.
Yeah, but I've got a G in there, but I was trying to remember what it stood for.
Forty-five dollars?
Forty.
Forty dollars.
NYSSMFO, I could come up with a bunch of fun.
It's municipal finance officers.
Oh, municipal finance officers. No.
It's not the Mary's side.
Are you looking at the abstract, Amy?
I am, it's not, they're not on it, but, yeah, the abstract.
Any more with the finances?
And the Kubota, what happened to the Kubota?
When I was, from way back, that was the exhaust medical home, and in the meantime, before we got it there, the front axle seal, they took the axle, front end part, changed the axle seal the same time, that was from quite a long time ago.
But it, well, that's, why is it just coming out? You just think it's got to it?
Yeah, we just got it there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was probably three weeks ago.
Okay.
First, 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 just, any more? Have we done with the, the preservers, the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, I have a presentation, warrant, made a motion to approve the warrant?
We have some additional invoices, in the amount of seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-three cents, which brings the warrant to twenty thousand, two fifty-nine, thirty.
Okay, made a motion to approve?
No more.
For the second?
Second.
Now, here we go, questions?
Oh, hold on.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I was calling, but I looked over, but, sorry.
I have one, no, that's fine, I have one before we go to the second page of the warrant, voucher number forty. This is the, this is the shed that we are using, hanging up the, like, preservers and the pylons and the pumps and stuff like that. I went down and checked these out, as I told some of you, I believe, the ones online, if you order those online, you end up being freight for them. And it was, the one we were looking at was ninety-nine dollars, just to ship it to the store.
To the store?
To the store.
Big up.
Yeah, so, uh, this is the one that I found, we got a discount on this, no tax, uh, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and five cents. I know in the previous meeting, we approved two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, uh, I need a motion to expend the twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents actually. We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, that's, that's why that, okay, okay, have a roll call on that question?
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Fisher.
Aye.
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Okay, in the warrant, we have an invoice for man's instruction, most.
It's on the first.
Yes, yes. Yes, okay, that's for the material for the pavilion. Okay, so I want to, approval to transfer ten thousand dollars, which is total cover of, for that pavilion, into account, eighty-five, ten point four, to cover the full cost, um, of that pavilion, and he will get the remainder of that when it's completed, which will be on our next one.
Can you just take a nap in the general fund?
General fund now, it's correct.
We have a motion to transfer ten thousand dollars, we don't have that. We need to save it to pay this client, eighty-five, ten point four.
For the second?
Second.
Need for the discussion, yeah?
Trustor Trombley. Aye.
Trustor Fisher.
Aye.
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Anything else, any, any more? This, Mike, is the, the water fund for hundred and seventy-six, fifty-nine, is that the one, the bills going to your account?
Yes, yeah.
Is it worth, so you'd be, like, full of oil, like, and then move it down, and go pay for the street? Okay, a motion, a second, warrant, twenty thousand, two fifty-nine, thirty-eight. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call, please.
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Fisher.
Aye.
Trustor Trombley.
Aye.
Trustor Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Superintendent's report?
Kind of, kind of busy most, drinking on the grass, and, 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 um, water meters have been read, and we're, 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 we did have a water leak over on the rail bank, um, between Oak Street and Prospect Street, and, uh, ring meters, and, and across, across water bubbling out of the ground, um, so we did have to dig it, um, and we have been, uh, uh, the main service line, but we end up changing, putting a new tapping band, uh, and we're fixing it, which we did do, and we, we know that there are issues, so, and we, there's less than one left there, and we changed for this, for this project, uh, and we just put the black dirt down, put some seed, so, uh, get everything back to where it was, before we started here. During that, we had to find some shut-off valves, build isolate that, uh, section, well, not so isolated, but isolate the valves that weren't needed, that way in case of emergency, if we pick the line, roll it, or something like that, we can shut it out. Rather have a blow shot, and then, trick over, than have a, 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 so, 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 so. So, in the process of doing that, we found, um, we found some valves that were tired over, one on the bottom of Oak Street, one on Oak Street, doing the, the chisel off the road, and, uh, put rights on, and we aren't using the valve, valves, we were able to shut them when we were, when we, so, we exposed through that, start down along the line, whatever that, the tire, um, come up, in time of emergency, at times, but, side, you know, cut the road, we tried to take care of it before, uh, we did, you know, we fully did deal with it period before. The lift stations, I, what do you go around for the hot water pressure washer, we got the, the wand in, uh, we went around and we, uh, sprayed out all lift stations, all the grease and debris that were inside, making, you know, oozing, and spack down, and make sure things are working properly, there's no grease, hot water flows, and whatnot. Of course, you heard the log boats did arrive on June seventeenth, they're down on River Street, um, and, uh, they have, they have been, have been, they're being used. The docks down there, these docks are, you know, for, for everybody to use, we did install some signs on the docks, please obey the signs, you know, they are for people lunch, you know, their, their boats, and go fishing off them, or whatnot, um, please don't dive or jump off docks, I had a few reports of people, there's some, there's here, there's others who were diving off docks, you know, we do have select pieces in the bottom of all of those docks, and so we're smashing them in, you know, uh, but please don't dive off the docks, you know, they're there for, we want to be able to use them and enjoy them, we don't want to have to take them out because of somebody, you know, somebody is foolish, or whatever. Uh, we had, had to change a few water meters, um, that were, I did readings, that were not right, you're not working, um, cut wires, whatever they'd be. We had a hydrant over here on Main Street as well, I noticed, about a week or so, it all flowed by, and it's, it's backwards, somebody apparently along the line hit it, nobody reported it, nobody, I mean, seen it out, space in the river, so, we were able to turn it back around, uh, luckily, nothing broke, pressure tested it last year, and, uh, we, it's sheer a breakaway out, so a lot of low, some, a lot of light had, had hit it, uh, and it had been hit back, or the truth was that we, I'm saying, but I know, I mean, noticing points happening, it was there, and it was just, it was ninety degrees, so I really, didn't really notice, I went by and looked, and found it on the backside, you know, it's, um, we also, uh, dug a few stones out of the roadway of Prospect, part of the cemetery, there's been a couple of pumps in the road there, that's been there since I started here, and there were some pretty good sized stones, like, through both across, and we, we did take out, so, we put buildings in there temporary, and when we do our paving, we, uh, we patch that, and, 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 try to keep them on. We've been doing, uh, we also, over on Parkhead Boulevard, we've, uh, we had a couple spots where there's dips in the road, which occur every year, you know, you get a little frost heat, um, we have those cut out, and pack with building to bring them back up, that area until we pay that, though, we wanted that road this year, it needs a, a lot of attention, that way, a lot of heavy truck traffic on there. We've been ditching on that road, cutting shoulders, and, uh, ditching to try and get the water, you know, away from the sides of the road, that way, it will drain and, uh, hopefully not make the road quite as spongy, especially with heavy traffic. This month, we're, we're continuing on getting the roads ready for paving, which includes cutting shoulders, ditching, you know, digging, roadways, repair, installing, et cetera. Once we're ready for paving, then we're going to get into, um, sidewalks, which, it'll be sidewalks from the time we're done paving, usually, I think, last year, we paved at the end of August, so, whenever the county gets on the list and says we may be paving, we're going to, it's the dawn of the road, prepare for them, um, it'll be sidewalks and those whole parts, so, unfortunately, if you look at the calendars, sixteen weeks are never remembered, so, it's just around the corner, the summers, uh, the summers.
Budge your tongue, don't even let it come out.
I don't know where it's going, but it's.
Don't let it come out.
It's going. I can put a couple digs here, say, I've got some stumps here, pulled on the pole company of a side road, but, uh, enough of their hedge here, one time, and we're going to take those out, it's Wednesday, but a dig sink will be up, and then we're going to move over to Seer Street, um, there's, Seer Street, we don't want to pave that one as well, I know the, the road and sidewalks in terrible shape. I know the clear road and sidewalks in terrible shape, we just want very culverts in there, there's humps all over. We want to get that dug and packed, so maybe by then, we can, we can take care of that and finish that stretch of sidewalk from where we ended down to the corner of Church Street.
It's a tough street, pardon?
Yeah, well, they're going to have to, on the other side, do something different, because we had a few last year that were, hard to be sidewalk for winter, but once we have sidewalks, they, they park there, they'll only get more and more replaced. And after that, we, we had some last year that were heavily, we had, we pulled pictures in. Community garden, I know there's, there's quite a few blocks have been planted. I know there was, was down there earlier in the week. Some of them, they're keeping up with them well, some of them, not so much. If you plant a, plant a garden down here, trees down, you know, pull some weeds, it's getting, some of them are getting overgrown. Not everybody's taking really good care of them, but everybody's going, going to get stuff planted, and then once it's planted, they just kind of leave it, or forget about it. It's really a gentleman's honor, so. If you have a plot down there, if you could, if you have a little extra time, please get down there and, you know, try to, try to take care of your plot that you, that you've been wanting to do here. Other than that, that's all I have. We will be, we will be moving forward in sidewalks, which I know, I spoke to you earlier, and as far as which ones are going to be, probably, probably guys who, who are actually, that's my aspect, the street. It's also, on the old street, I would have to look through and spoke to you, a couple of trees, they're probably tops, and on the opposite side. It's going to be tough to put a sidewalk down there, because it leaves the trees, it pushes the sidewalk. I don't know what's going to happen, one of those trees, a lot of it's dead. I'm going to have to look at the scene, because all those trees here, everyone's leaving those houses. So, we're going to have to look into that scene. It's, I don't know, right away, some of them, we're going to have to move, if it is, you know, what happened, we, we, I don't know. See if we can, I mean, we hate to, but it's hazardous enough for us, we have to see if we can, we can make some. I haven't gone too far into that yet, but we'll see if it's possible. It's about all I have.
When you do the, the sidewalks on Prospect, especially the lower half, are you going to make them?
Four foot.
Legal width?
Yeah. Four foot. We do a four foot, and some of the, some of the, the street, five foot, we, we don't really have, we're compliant, you know, any of that compliant, but we do at least four foot, nothing, we have, there's some that are too compliant. Our sidewalk, we should be four foot. You have to be able to stay on the sidewalk, you better have four foot line.
You have to make them ADA compliant if you're updating them?
Well, some of them now, there's a big, that's a big thing. You get the, you've got to put rubber bump pads, you've got to put, there's a lot of stuff, it goes with that. You know, we don't have, I think any place should have signs for crosses. I spoke with some of the guys last year about that, and it was, it's probably a funny thing in the future. I don't know, rubber pads and, you know, seeing the last time, and what time, sidewalk, humps, you know, it's, it's compliant, or, 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 or.
Talked to John at the North Country Center for Independence. He goes out, does free assessments for everybody as to what would be compliant, so he'll let me know.
I know.
He's a compliance officer for the county.
ADA, we have to make them ADA compliant, because it's checked on. We know, we know it's checked on to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I think we should, I think we really should be looking at things like that, because you'll be amazed at the number of folks that are in our communities with disabilities, and that they rely on being able to get around their communities, and if you pretend they don't exist, it's, it's a slap in their face. If we're going and doing the work, I, I think we need to make it compliant.
Well, I'm never going to, she must be the girl.
That's our thing. I'll have one near you, Paul.
I'm only calling, we need to, to deal with, but I don't know, we can still do that. I think that's ADA compliance has to be type of like, I don't think that.
How do that look, some of these streets, and then we have quite a bit of space?
Well, I'm thinking of Oak Street. In front of, in front of the old marketplace. And that goes sidewalk, old sidewalk, right into ditch.
That's horrible there, that's so dangerous. That is so dangerous.
Yeah, the, the ditch.
Especially kids whipping on their bikes to the trim, well. Spend that whistle on, very dangerous.
Same thing, same option, you got to go, you will be there, it's like, so you will be there, it's too much.
And that's a drop, it's not, it's not a subtle drop either, it's a drop.
Is that the, 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 or, or? It's easy, it's easy, it's, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been, yeah, probably thirteen feet now.
It's probably more than that.
It's a two, two feet.
It's not really two, four feet.
It's a two, two.
We just saw, or even maybe some more. Some of them have fallen, which I don't know, I don't know if it's falling, it was totally, you know. It'd be some, you know, the black, it's, but, you put down?
It won't be, I guess, too bad.
Sure, probably, right?
I'm sure.
It's kind of a street.
Just have a gravel tree where the rest of it is ditched.
You, there you go.
I think it's the only spot.
We will say, one more street, it's, 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 it's.
Yeah, it's going to be still more, you know, on the right hand side of the road, one more, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we have to clean it, we have to, same thing with, we want to put some leaves, we want to, we want to, we want to, that's all we're making all the ditches. Uh, yeah, that's all the best one in there.
So, like, uh, as far as Pocatay, uh, those are, are you replacing culverts there too?
No, we, uh, for the, the two places that were the worst as far as cuts across, they have been stopped coming through, but, but contractors were, 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 so many, when they put water lines, both finding periodic and one got, like, sort of sewer line through the process. But, uh, so usually, we get, you know, they were, they were, put back, getting compacted, but less of the road as you plant, so the rest of the road, got more movement to look, put back, so we had to stay and put across, especially this one, it was bad cross we had. And it was rated, we did depression, we, we, we did. Most of those, you see, colors did that, when they come back, those don't come back quite as much, so we, with the top off, the trouble is, uh, the first one, probably four, two inches down, six inches down, there's the, the cable company, they own the cable. It's not even covered, the line's coming out of the side, it's not even, if you cover the grass, that's why they cover the ground with it, they saw that. You know, a hand shovel, you do, you do contractor for another week, they still cover the waterline. Straight out, we got picture, they're straight out, poppy, around the grasses, some of the grass.
There's a lot of that fiber optic line on their road that's on top of the surface.
Really?
They spring through the culvert.
Yeah.
Through the culvert and then just pop on the, up on the bank.
Comes down through, it comes down through.
How can they legally do that?
People never come.
This, this, I think that's one of the... Yeah, yeah.
Did you call them?
Yeah, they know, because I had the ding, said, can you move it, just move it to the side, so it's not coming down. It goes through the culvert, turns the road and then it's up in the fine trees and then it's for temporary line, which temporary permanent, yes, it goes on, that's a problem. But I'm trying to get you, but it's not sure, like, you know, it's, you know, yeah. When they mark it up on the, you're starting with temporary line, you're driving down, you dig there, just pull the side movement, dig.
Oh my God.
But, uh, it's what it is.
Well, there's got one of those. We just got one of those and the bills are horrendous. But now I'm still getting bills.
It's like, it's like taking a bunch of hair and cutting it.
Oh, I know.
And they gotta splice that, these hairs, these kind of hairs.
Bills, don't you think they would protect it a little bit more?
I think the other one, something happened, that's why they put that in, but I think you did it during, you know, the winter, so that was the way to get them, they needed it, you put the line there, but I don't think it just let you change anything.
The winter ended a while ago.
Very long, I did. A lot of times you're working really hard.
Wow.
You know, got a lot, been better now.
So you're looking to pave Pocatay and Cedar?
Yeah.
Is that it for paving?
No, we've done a few other spots, so we've got, what we have to do, um, depending on how, how far we get with drainage, uh, we're going to have to do something with Blue Street, we need some drainage in there, some drainage tower, whatever's, the marsh pushing up into the center of the road. I don't know, we have sidewalks, we have to raise it. I'm going to do something to get people on the other end and get plenty of that. Ashline Drive needs paved at too.
South Street's right over there.
Down toward the Turtles, but we're going to wait because that waterline's going to be extended, there's no such thing as paving it down and the next year they dig that, they extend that waterline.
Right.
So any place that there's really waterlines, you know, we're going to put it in there back up. So, you know, patch it, we absolutely have to, but, um...
It always creates problems.
Anything you make a cut, you know, it's never the same.
Yeah, never. And it seems every time we put a road in, some lawnmower's got to cut across or something. It's like Murphy's Law, you know? Every time.
I don't know, I guess that would be, I don't know, which one it is. I know on Pocatay, that's going to be, that's, that's going to be expensive road, kind of shit, some of that's in bad shape. And we've got twelve sewer man legs in that road we're going to raise. So that's going to be, depending on who the highest rider would get, too much, some may have a nub, and then they won't say anything. It's going to be, uh...
Is anyone on that road paying taxes yet, are we out of that tax-free timeframe?
We only have, we only have one on five foot.
Only one?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to put in the tax rate for them, they all, so they all bail, you know, when they get done with it.
Double their size. There's one, that's something, you want to double their size.
They want to double it, yeah.
But just increases per car, I mean, you know.
There's a lot of that.
But they're paying taxes.
Your expenses. To me, if you don't take care of it now, by next year, the whole road will be prooccupied. There's a lot of places now that's breaking, especially this, like, uh, Blue Red, you know, it's breaking, you know, sections.
So you're saying you're going to put actually that through?
Well, they're, they're going to have to be leathered, so any of the, you know, the public, the truck drivers you get, so they're going to have to shim that, shim it in. So I don't know, there should be places that's probably only six inches apart, I mean, we'll see what John looks like and know, you know, down there.
It's like ditching that, I think, to get that green.
Oh, yeah, there's so much clay there.
The clings to dry out, but they don't, they don't move so much.
It's wet, you scoop it and you can't get it out of your bucket, because then you got to build a shelf, I mean, it's, uh, and we're doing more ditch, I, I went through a ditch that quickly, get the water, it was standing water, so you can't tell your depth, it's starting to pitch. We did get drained off, uh, going back down and around and cleaning it, so the ditches, you know, it'd be right.
And the fiber always been...
And we're going to, and you got so much, very electric, very gas, very capable, so you've got to make sure, you know. That's really helpful, or, I know I had, I don't think, I think this last meeting I told Brian, I just want me to come with this, start on the street and set up some plant, I'm not, I gotta, I gotta be, you know, first, you know, you don't get out there, it's just, uh, we'll put this here, and we, we'll just let it out.
Anything else for me?
No. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Andrew.
Okay, I have one more thing, I forgot one about your next part. We had our auditor here, I thought, our auditor is now complete, we're in here, and we've fixed the walls, they're very good shape.
Nice job, ladies.
It's always nice when an auditor comes in and out in the same day.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was here, she said, oh, she came last time, this time. Let's go, Steph.
That's awesome. That's great, good job.
Um, correspondence, correspondence from Bermuda Power to State Life, office store regarding the lowest bid on water towers. Correspondence, correspondence from Bermuda Power to Town Champagne regarding the lowest bid on the water towers. Uh, correspondence from Plumb County Treasurer's Office and we checked the pilot program. Um, J C O, monthly report for, monthly report for June. Correspondence from Plumb County Treasurer and we checked the second quarter sales tax program. Correspondence from Martin Harding and Lozavi regarding Timothy Rivers Motorcycle Accident on Lawrence Pocatay Drive. Correspondence from Martin Harding and Lozavi regarding Michael Stoner's bicycle pipe, motorcycle accident on Lawrence Pocatay Drive. Correspondence for returning of Mohammed Khan, owner of property at eleven fifty-five Route Nine. Letter from Pope Off to Pedro to returning of Mohammed Khan regarding property at eleven fifty-five Route Nine.
And those correspondents, six and seven, is in direct, there's a direct relationship there, we were talking about with, with frostbes and things of that nature, where it seemed like the rest of the road is, is moving around and, and those, the date of this accident was April thirteenth, the frost wasn't going to run, but end of April was, uh...
April forty-seven, I lost water on, uh...
So...
Yeah, that's forty-seven, yeah.
So this movement on that area, I think we need to, this was done by a contractor who bales a pipe that was cut there, to run a waterline and a cable line through there. And what I'm getting as a response to this is that, that road where it was cut by Conroy and Conroy was packed correctly. It was re-packed correctly. They do a foot, they pack it down, they do another foot, they pack it down, which is supposed to be done. So I think what's happening here is that part that they've cut into is okay, that's, it's, it's the rest of the road that's moving around. Eventually, if you get a frost like you did last year, it's going to be quite prominent. This is in the hands of the insurance backing up. So, uh, we'll inform our attorney, the insurance backing this break, and then we'll see what we can do with this, uh, and then we'll just...
There was, um, he was marked. And there was delineators and reflectors and flags, uh, there at the time, um, which most of them were frostbes as well. For that kind of, uh, I have bump signs before and after, uh, I did, I actually happened a few stopby, I would always ask them to go to the coast of the road, we, you know, just put bump signs from the back, let them know. I put the orange color, the center, you know, in the frostbath, you know, where it was, so people would know, but that lasted two days and the truck trailer, they crushed the pieces, so. So we did, we got to put a bump sign before, before coming both ways, you know? And they're, they're still up there.
I've seen them, I've seen them.
They had, they had flags, and if when you're, you know, one of a regular flying flag, um, awesome regular flag.
I think it's interesting at this point, you know, that there were three, three motorcycles. The first one went through that, over that block, went through there and kept on going. This is the point two, in fact, they got stopped, you take that. So I can talk to you on the shape of that road.
And I mean, I thought we all had a meeting, but we had, we had a little dug up, what we did at the, uh, fill it, and it was after the meetings, when we had to do it, so, I don't know, we touched on it, we didn't, you know, see it, or, yeah, I don't think. I mean, our picture, we, we put pictures in.
There's pictures.
Depending on that, so, I don't know.
Okay, anything else on correspondence? Old business, anything with the library?
Nope, I haven't heard from anybody, um, who's a library?
Uh, the second, uh, under old business vehicle purchase, I know we tabled this bill next month, in September, um, just to put it on the record. The van, there's no plates on the van, it's off the road. The frame broke, uh, almost caused an accident for our employees, so it's, it's done, it's added for the term care, there's a bid file already marked off. Um, I think, I would like to, I'd like to start looking for the vehicle as soon as possible. Get the bids up and, uh, start that process, we reworked them a little bit, you know, sit down, talk to Mike about, we, I have a contractor, so I have a three-quarter contractor, a little less expensive, but the same, the same, some of the same things. What we want to do with it, we have a three-quarter vendor, but what we want to do, I want kids to do, like gas mileage, and make them open the box, and that's, yeah, so, I'd like to be able to get that process started again, if that's all right for the board.
Good, definitely. Still, the work is all on my, you know?
He's in the...
Just about, I think, that's what I should, I would see, I have yours, I see, I don't know about someone, but, I don't know, I'm, 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 I'm assisting, I'll leave a bike and, I should say, I don't know, something, I don't know. That's true, you want to have, well, I'm good pressure, if I have a boy, you want to follow each other's strategies. There's a lot of, but if, if, if I have any, I have others to touch.
Yeah, it will, it will operate.
If you tend to follow, you're...
You guys have to talk a lot, or people don't hear on the camera, I'm, I'm barely hearing you with that.
What I was just saying is if you tend to say, oh, I, I would stick with two point firm, I don't do that, um, I think, if you like that, or if you like that.
Well, we'll see what's available, see what's up there, I mean, there's still two thousand fifteen's on the state counter. And then, and we're having their end-of-year sales anyway, so I'm sure we can, somewhere trying to get you. It's just a...
I believe this, that was, from the, from the six years. But I would be, it's quick, I would be going another year. We, we have to buy, it's not dependent on, it's appreciation. We don't have to worry about appreciation, you know, if you're going to trend there.
Right.
It'll be around, right?
Uh, I see that. Can you make a decision to put, put that out for bid, the other one, so we can circle or circle set? I think there'd be more for putting it out for bid, you know, if you want to put out the bid, then you'll send it on the junkyard. You got a few some tires on it, the load's holding up.
We'd have to bid it out, I mean, we just can't, we'd have to bid it.
I mean, you do that, or you could scrap it on the junkyard, but I don't know if you want to circle set, how you want to do it, if you have to make a decision to do that. And then if you go off the bid. That, and, uh, extra tires probably could be another thing.
They want tires for it?
I don't know.
Circle, circle, circle.
Yeah. I think a motion is circle, so, the van and any other foot, you want to put on the list, and...
Second.
Probably get that in the tire, right now, I mean, yeah, I don't know. So the van's for van, instead of square tires, have to go for...
Square tires for the van?
No, for four, one, we put new tires in the four pickup, we're a bigger lug tire, there's just, there are still decent tire, I'm sure you could put it out in the bid.
Off-road, uh, G. I think they're not G.
Okay, have a motion and a second? Circle those? Okay, any further discussion? All those diverse, even if I'm just saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries? And we'll start looking at the bids, we're looking to bid, okay? The pavilion, the part of the pavilion, well, I know the materials have been ordered, I expect that construction will start probably next week, week after.
Maybe tell me after Wednesday, like, you're supposed to give me only a day or a day or two ahead of time, so I can make the trench for you.
So that's on the near's horizon. Uh, we talked about Village Fest, uh, I know somewhere along the way, when we, we collected money, there was money collected to buy another dog station, doggy station?
We have that, I have that.
You have the station?
You have it? Okay, so we just got to get it put up?
They just have to put it up there. It's around that location, where a lot of people were filming.
Should go down by Ashline?
Yeah.
Ashline itself.
You can't, they're not, they're not off the dike safe, they won't, they'll do it. I thought we'd get a lot of them.
Oh, great.
It's been a little last year.
Yeah, I didn't realize that happened.
Yeah.
All right, uh, my last word, new business here, is, uh, I'd like to start the process of getting the wastewater blowers replaced. I know we talked about this a couple of years ago, I think we're on extended life here. I'd ask for your car, and we'll probably have to go after a couple more engineering firms, but I'd offer you a car since they are making out so well with this water project, if they could cut us a deal and, you know, do some specifications and handle the bid process as well. Matt wants to, Matt Uber, wants to look at what we had in the last bidding round. I'll give that, I'll see you tomorrow, I'll give that to him and let him work up something. We can also call a couple other engineering firms and have them do, I think we did this last year, the last time we did it, I think we had three, if I remember correctly, we had three different engineering firms look at this and, uh, give us their recommendations, and then we went with one to do the bidding, or to do the specifications, which resulted in the bids that we all knew. To be nice, we're too high, to be not so nice, we're perky to be young, so, that's the start of the road down there. So just to let the board know that, uh, we're going to start that process as well. So we've got, you know, so we've got that process started. I think we're on borrowed time here, we're well past the, well past the anticipated age for those electric blowers, and I think we'll realize a huge saving on electric cost, look at your bills, and the electric cost on this, this, that's for now. So if we can cut that by ten percent or twenty percent, something in that area, and I think that was the estimate of the last specification, supposed to be ten percent of electric cost, but one percent.
Yeah, it was ten, ten, three, something like that.
So... Some of those. Any other new business coming for the board? Motion to adjourn, you need a second?
Second.
Paul and Trevor?
Aye.